Good afternoon, everyone. It is now after 1 o'clock and therefore it is time for the Blair County Board of Commissioners Works, not Work Session, Business Session Meeting. So I'd like to call the meeting to order and the first order of business is that we will enjoy a moment of silent reflection or prayer. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. We do not. All right then. Do we have an executive session to announce?
We have not met an executive session since our last meeting, which would have been on Tuesday, March 26.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is time for public comment. Now, this is public comment on the items on the agenda. The public comment regarding the opioid settlement will be held after, at the very end of this meeting. So if you're here to speak about the opioid settlement appropriation, we'll do that at the end of the meeting. So does anyone have any comments regarding our general business for today?
One public comment was received from the Blair County Bar Association, which I believe addresses commissioners' meetings over, or the commissioners overall rather than opioid settlement funds. The public comment is to DRL Altoona Mirror Editor and Blair County Commissioners. The Blair County Commissioners recently decided to terminate their relationship with the local law firm of EB Black Attorneys LLC, a relationship which spanned over five decades. In an Altoona Mirror article dated March 13, 2024, Commissioner Board Chair Dave Kessling is reported to have said that the switch to a Pittsburgh-based law firm is to save money and because he felt that no local firm could handle the work. The Blair County Bar Association takes issue at the way in which the decision to outsource legal services to an outside, out-of-county law firm was made and the perception that local law firms cannot handle the work. There are 119 members of the Blair County Bar Association. Of those members, several serve as solicitors to our townships, cities, and boroughs, as well as municipal authorities and boards. Several also serve as legal counsel to neighboring counties and row offices. We have local attorneys who are extremely knowledgeable in the field of labor and employment law and municipal law. These local attorneys were stripped of the opportunity to submit a proposal for the position. By the commissioners failing to offer the opportunity for local law firms to submit proposals for the legal counsel positions, they will likely incur more legal fees than what they are currently paying. It is likely that local attorneys would have underbid the Pittsburgh-based firm of Gabriel Farah, PC, if given the chance. According to the March 13, 2024 article, Gabriel Farah has assured the commissioners they will, they will not charge more than $150,000 for solicitor services for the remainder of 2024, which equates to nine months. There is no assurance that the charges will not increase exponentially in 2025. Local attorneys are vested in our communities. Our members pay property taxes on their homes and businesses. We pay staff who are likewise members of our community. Members of the Blair County Bar Association support local sports and civic organizations. Our members serve as Little League coaches, soup kitchen volunteers, Sunday School teachers, community event organizers, and many other volunteer roles within our community. Further, members of our bar association regularly serve as court appointees in complicated cases, court cases for indigent clients and mediators, arbitrators, and hearing officers, and in doing so free up valuable court resources. The same cannot be said of Gabriel Farah, PC. The Blair County Bar Association respectfully requests that the Blair County Commissioners reconsider their decision to enter into an attorney-client relationship with Gabriel Farah, PC. We ask that local law, local attorneys be given the opportunity to submit proposals for the positions and be considered. If the commissioners have already entered into a contract with Gabriel Farah, PC, we ask that when that expires, local attorneys be given the opportunity to submit proposals for the positions. We ask that the Blair County Commissioners consider staying local and supporting our Blair County community with the same gusto that the members of the Blair County Bar Association do. This is signed by President Tracy Knovel.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? All right then. We will continue on in our agenda to number seven, a proclamation. Do we have the proclamation?
Yes. Thank you. This is a proclamation declaring April as Fair Housing Month. Whereas, April 11, 2024 marks the 56th anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act, Title 8 of the Civil Rights Act of 1968. And whereas, the Fair Housing Act prohibits housing discrimination on the basis of race, color, religion, national origin, familial status, sex, or disability, and directs that the administration of housing programs be done in a manner that affirmatively furthers the purposes of fair housing law. And whereas, Blair County recognizes its mission to ensure that all residents are granted an opportunity to obtain safe, affordable, energy-efficient housing. And whereas, Blair County further recognizes that in achieving its mission, it must also realize and further the purposes of the Fair Housing Act to overcome discrimination, achieve truly balanced and integrated communities, and promote fair housing choice. And whereas, Blair County is committed to its duty to affirmatively further fair housing and to furthering its mission by making equal access to affordable housing available to every resident without regard to any citizens, race, color, religion, national origin, familial status, sex, or disability. Now therefore be it resolved by the Blair County Commissioners that in the pursuit of the goal and responsibility of affirmatively furthering fair housing opportunities for all citizens of Blair County, the Blair County Commissioners do hereby join in the national celebration by commemorating the anniversary of the Fair Housing Act and proclaiming April 2024 as Fair Housing Month in Blair County, Pennsylvania. I would put that in the form of a motion.
And I will second that. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. 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 The motion passes.
I just wanted to just comment and thank you guys for, for doing the proclamation. It has been a few years since our program actually did a proclamation. Today, I'm, I'm joined with Natasha Bergwicker from the Center for Community Action. This is actually her annual activity that we have to do when we receive as grantees federal funding. Both of us are receiving funds through HUD, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. We must affirmatively further fair housing and what those, what they, in our contracts, we're obligated to do at least one activity, new activity annually to promote that, get that word out to the, the public and those types of things. And again, like I said, you guys may be more familiar with what we're doing. We're using HUD funds through our, we receive it through our community development block rate program, our home program. Like I said, those are all housing programs. We formally did ESG. Natasha's going to talk to you a little bit more of what ESG is doing here at Blair County. But then also our lead hazard reduction program that we do for the kiddos here in Blair County. So like I said, it is something that, like I said, we have to do for, you know, to get that, that word out and stuff. But I'm going to let Natasha talk a little bit more. This is her activity. But they have recently overtaken Blair Community Action and they wanted to present what they're doing here in Blair County.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Our, our federal funds are ESG funds, which is Emergency Solution Grant. It's for homeless prevention and rapid rehousing, and our services include case management, budget counseling, revenue years, and assistance and security deposit. That's our, the federal funds that formally are. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right then. Let's proceed through the unfinished business.
Thank you. The first resolution for your consideration today is number 159. It's approving a temporary easement agreement between the County of Blair and the Altoona Water Authority. That would be along the Lake Mont Reservoir, as outlined on your agenda.
Is there a motion to accept this? So moved? I'll second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All right. The motion is approved.
Resolution 160 is approving the supplemental proposal for service contract between the County of Blair and Keller Engineers, as outlined on your agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 160. Is there a second? Second? Is there any discussion or question? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Resolution 161 is approving the supplemental proposal of service contracts between the County of Blair and Keller Engineers for additional construction and shop drawing, review, construction inspection services, and that's on our Box Cover Group, as outlined on your agenda.
I'll make a motion for the approval of Resolution 161. Is there a second? Second? Thank you. Is there any discussion? Comment? I just have a comment. I'm just tickled that we are finishing up that project and it has been a wonderful project and it's been a good addition to, to the communities in East Freedom Area, Freedom Township, Clayesburg, and Greenfield Township. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Resolution 161 is approving the County of Blair Affordable Housing Trust Fund Program allocation to supplement funding of the owner-occupied rehabilitation program through Blair, throughout Blair County. That would be administered through the community development programs and not to exceed $50,000.
Is there a motion for the approval of Resolution 168? So moved? Thank you. I'll second that. Any questions or comments? All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Resolution 163 is approving the Fiscal Year 2425 Agreement for Payment of Legal Services between the County of Blair, Blair County Children, Youth, and Families, and Mary Ann Probst, as outlined on your agenda.
Is there a motion for the approval of this resolution? So moved? I will second that. Any comments or questions? All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Resolution 164 is approving the Fiscal Year 2425 Agreement for Payment of Legal Services between the County of Blair, Blair County Children, Youth, and Families, Mary Ann Probst, and Tyler Rolls, as outlined on your agenda.
Is there a motion for this resolution? So moved? I will second. Any comments or questions?
I actually will comment. I could have said the same thing about the first one, but you'll notice there are multiple here for Mary Ann Probst. She is not the only attorney who's performing two different roles, so obviously she won't perform both roles in the same case, but we are, we do require various different attorneys doing various different things in CYF cases. Some of that is changes in the rules in the courts, but then we also have had trouble finding new attorneys with an interest in, in working in the CYF, on the CYF cases. So we're grateful to those members of our bar association who have said they are willing to perform, you know, both roles for us. And President Judge Cagreys has been helpful in recruiting people to, to accept some of these contracts. So just wanted to mention that, just because it is confusing when you see the same name more than one time.
Right. Right. Did you?
We have a motion in a second.
Yes, we already have a motion in a second. Then all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes.
Resolution 165 is approving the 2024 Agreement and Terms between the County of Blair, Blair County Children, Youth, and Families, and Simple In-N-Out.
Is there a motion for the approval of this resolution? So moved? I'll second that. Any comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? The resolution passes.
Resolution 166 is approving the 2024 Agreement for Purchases Under Bidding Threshold between the County of Blair, Blair County Children, Youth, and Families, and Positive Promotions, Inc., in the total amount of $1,458.04. I will note before you take a motion that we did have some outlining, or outstanding questions on this item. Mindy Hustler from Children, Youth, and Families was able to answer those in an email. I passed those along to you, but we, to answer for the rest of you who might not have been privy to that email exchange, that is going to be paid out of the needs-based budget, also known as our general fund. It wasn't going to be put under a grant unless there's availability in that grant, then we'll be able to recoup funds to the county. So this was a budgeted item in their needs-based and county budgets.
Is there a motion for the approval of Resolution 166? So moved? I'll second that. Is there any question or comment?
I did just want to comment that the county share of the needs-based budget, budgeted amount is $291.61. So the remainder of that, which is $1,166.43, is state-funded. And again, if we are able to recoup it through a grant, we will do that, but the amount for the county is not that full amount. It's just the 291.
Yes. All right. Those, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Resolution 167 is approving the Fiscal Year 2425 Agreement for Purchases of Legal Services between the County of Blair, Blair County Children, Youth, and Families, and Matthew Donbroski, as outlined on your agenda.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 167? So moved? I'll second that. Any comments or questions? All right. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. 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 Any opposed? The motion passes.
Resolution 168 is approving the Fiscal Year 2324 Purchase of Service Agreement and HIPAA Business Associate Agreement between the County of Blair, Blair County Children, Youth, and Families, and Professional Family Care Services.
Is there a motion for the approval of Resolution 168? So moved? I'll second that. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Resolution 169 is approving a Court Interpreter Services Grant Application for Language Access Reimbursable Costs for the Calendar Year 2023 to the Administrative Office of Pennsylvania Courts in the total amount of $9,392.62.
I will make a motion for the approval of Resolution Number 169. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments?
I guess maybe a question or a comment. I'm not sure which. I know some of the grants, like for the senior judges, they don't always reimburse us the full amount, but do we know in this case whether they usually do or whether they will? Probably something I should have asked on Tuesday.
Yeah, you're not asking the subject matter expert, but let me see what was provided in their packet. I believe they're asking for all of it, but I'm not sure. I don't, I want to be careful of how I word this. I just am not aware of how much they will reimburse us. It could be 100%. I, I don't know the, if there's a percentage. I'm almost there. Yeah, it appears that they're asking for the full amount that we paid in 2024. Now whether we will get that full amount back or if it will be reduced by some amount by the state and AOPC, I am not aware. Thank you. To be surprised.
Yes. Thank you. All right. All those in favor of, of resolu, of approving Resolution Number 169, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes.
Resolution 170 is approving the Submission of the 2023 Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund, LATCF, Annual Report to the U.S. Department of Treasury.
Is there a motion for the approval of this resolution? So moved? I will second that. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Therefore, the motion passes.
Resolution 170 also had, needed some follow-up after Tuesday's meeting. The resolution reads that it is approving an overall allocation of $20,000 for community-based park and recreation grants, and the grant amount maximum award would be $3,000 per, per quester, per grantee. There was some question on whether they had available or sufficient enough funds in the park and rec account coming out of our large amphitheater renovate, well, reconstruction. We, we took out the old one and rebuilt new with the match to DCNR. I provided the commissioners, the full board, with the, the grant and how it was allocated in the approved 2024 budget. I, I'm happy to answer any questions or entertain any, any thoughts at this point.
Do you have any questions or comments?
Yes. Okay. So in the budget, it looked like the fixed assets lines, there was a road improvement project where there wasn't a grant available. The total cost for that is estimated at $325,000, but it doesn't look like it was actually included in the adopted budget. Did we budget for that somewhere else? Okay. There's also a note here that the road improvements are to the point of being essential in 2024, and I believe this is referring to that lower parking lot that Commissioner Webster mentioned on Tuesday. And I have to agree that that project, the condition of that, that area of the park is quite frankly embarrassing, to the point of, I'm wondering at what point we have cars that are damaged by the potholes. And I don't think at this, I personally feel like we're, we should not be spending money on anything else that's not essential until we have fixed that road and parking lot.
And I, I, as you've known from my comments the other day, I believe that I mentioned that our main goal with, with this particular budget is to take care of the needs of Valley View Park, because that is a public park that we try to maintain and keep available for our citizens. And between the two projects that are really necessary, the pedestrian bridge, which needs to be replaced, and the road improvements, which are, we're looking into help, getting us some help with that, but that's going to be a very expensive project. Those two particular projects could potentially lead us to some liability. Somebody trips, falls, car gets into a pothole that they can't get out of, who knows? But I, I believe that we should be concentrating on those particular projects because they are definitely essential for the safe operation of the park and the safety of the public using it. And so I would not move or second for this particular resolution. However, if you would like to make a motion, you are certainly free to do so.
No, I, I am not. And I guess also with respect to the pedestrian bridge, I kind of skipped over that because I think the parking lot is, is an even worse issue, but that, this is not the first budget where that project has been brought up and still has not been completed, so.
All right.
I will, Park and Rec meets next week. I will carry your comments back to the Park and Recreation Board.
I'll be there. They'll be able to interrogate me.
You can help me deliver that message, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for providing us with the information. That's very helpful.
Absolutely.
All right. Well, that concludes our old business, but we have some new business today.
We do have two items of urgency. One, I will ask for your action, and, and my apologies, this is something that came up rather fast. Welcome to county government. When the state says jump, we say how high. The first item on your agenda today, we'll, we'll take some explanation and I'll be happy to answer any of your questions. Dawn made us aware of a, a grant opportunity through what they're calling is State and Local Cybersecurity Grant Program. We do have to respond to the state. They are asking for 67 responses, and they are asking for us to choose option one or option two. I believe the commissioner boards in the past, since I've been here for seven years, have put a very high emphasis on cybersecurity and have taken very good measures utilizing equipment that we've trusted and has been recommended by our, our IT partners and, and RBA associates. The first option would opt us into the state's provided cybersecurity product. That does come with no cost to the county and are federally funded through at least 2027, but the products would replace our current systems, our current cybersecurity systems that we currently use and that you have chosen in the past to sign contracts with. Option two would make us opt out of that program, obviously losing that funding, but would allow us to use our county-provided cybersecurity projects at the annually budgeted rate, which means there would not be any efforts from the state to help us pay for those. Now, most of those contracts are already underway for the 2024, 2025, you know, renewal period, whenever those do hit, and they have all been budgeted. So it's not anything that we were being asked to come up with money that wasn't already in, in the, or allocated in the 2024 approved budget. It's a matter of, do you wish to move to the state-chosen systems or with, I might add, I'm not sure what kind of controls that comes with. When you move to a state system, we may not have the, the same oversight ability that we would with our own system. So I do apologize for needing to put you on the spot today with not a whole lot of, not a whole lot of background. We can certainly, it's, it's an April 1st, I know, yeah, which is Monday. Some options there if you need to think about it. We could recess reconvene for that, that piece of business or.
We would reconvene later today, though.
Monday was the first. I mean, I, I don't know if you're all in on the first, but Monday looks crazy.
Monday before what time?
Yes. Yeah.
Do we know what the products they have selected are? I know they provided us with certain things for elections specifically, but this is not just elections. This is everything.
Correct. So it's the MS Albert Center, which we are familiar with through the elections, some election grant. It's CO-FENSE Security Awareness, which we have the, if I'm not mistaken, that is, what's our fishing? Beyond Trust? No, that's Bomb Guard. That's the, Know Before. I'm sorry. That did not come to, to me. Tenable Vulnerability Management, which I'm not familiar with what that project would, or that particular item would do, or Splunk Security Event Management. So again, I think it would take place of our, what we use is Arctic Wolf. We use the Beyond Trust and the Know Before, so it would take the place of our trusted partners.
Is the, is the state going to force us in 2027 or 2028 to move to these particular products that they are subsidizing at this point? We don't know. Because some, that's what they'll do sometimes.
First of all, time will tell. I'm not sure.
That's what they do sometimes.
Yeah.
And to me, that's an important question, because if they're going to force us to do it, we might as well do it now when they're paying for it instead of in a couple years when they force us to do it and might not pay for it.
I don't know. I'm sorry.
Yeah. And we don't have Dawn here or anyone from IT.
He was not able to be with us. He tried to brief, brief me with as many talking points as we could think of.
Do you have any other questions?
Is this, so it said it's fiscal year, wait. I guess I'm confused. It's fiscal year 2023, or, but we're not in fiscal year 2023. Is that?
I, I don't know if it's a typo or if it's when they're using, they're using their fiscal year 2023 grant allocation for products now. Sometimes there's a, that might be the grant year, but you have so many years to use it.
Right.
That might be the grant cycle.
Yeah. I, I think it's very difficult without knowing. I mean, I think, so we're, we're in the midst of contracts that we already budgeted for and paid for. I don't know what all the termination clauses are of all of those contracts, or what the timing is of when the state would be able to provide us with the other things. I think it's really difficult to tell exactly what the cost ends up being to the county because, again, we're already paying for certain things. We may be obligated to pay. We may be obligated to pay for, you know, a month or two before we can terminate those anyway. I guess another question I had was whether they're going to start doing this yearly or whether it's just that fiscal year 2023 grant.
Well, it looks like through 2027, but again, when do they start and end?
Well, I think that, I think that is a good point. I don't know if when we opt out now, if we opt out through 2027 or if we just opt out for the calendar year of 2024. And it really doesn't give me that in the grant agreement. So I'm, I'm without that answer as well.
Yeah, there's just so many questions. I would want to, I would want the opportunity to ask Dawn for his thoughts on this too.
What if, what if we did this? What if we just held it till the end of the meeting, came back to it after the opioid discussion? I could potentially, without my cell phone, I don't have that, um, get ahold of Dawn. I know he's.
He's in there.
Oh, is he? Okay. So we could potentially see if he could join us at the end of the meeting then, uh, for a call.
That's fine. We'd.
Let's do that. With that in mind, okay. Let's, let's try to coordinate that, so.
All right. That sounds good.
All right. Then the next item of business, new business, we'll try to get through this quickly, is requesting approval to amend Resolution Number 137 of 2024. That was dated March 14th, 2024. It's correcting an amount. It, it was a, it was a mistake on our part in the, in the front office. We had the last year's amount of 100, $1,195. It should have been the new rate, the 2024 rate of $1,255. And that's for Biddle Services for the, um, 911 Center.
All right. Do you have any questions or comments?
No.
Is there a motion to approve? We don't have a number for it.
It's okay.
Oh, well, no, to approve the amendment of Resolution Number 137.
Yeah, that's fine. So moved.
Right. I will second that. All those in favor of approval of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. That motion also passes.
Thank you.
All right. So at this point, we will be welcoming some open discussion regarding the opioid settlement funds. I noticed that some folks, um, have appeared since we started the other part of the meeting. So if you have not signed in on the sign in sheet, please come forward and do so. And, uh, we will then, um, commence with public comments. Our fiscal folks don't want to participate right now. All right. Well, the purpose of this, as you all probably are aware, Blair County, as well as all of the counties that opted into the litigation regarding the opioid settlement, has received some funding and is, um, supposed to be receiving funding in the amount, total amount, um, through 20, well, 20 years worth. The total amount is estimated to be five and a half million dollars. And we are trying to make certain that we spend that money over those 20 years in the best way possible for the best benefit to the county. And as a result, uh, we are welcoming thoughts and comments from the public. So today, uh, we will begin with public comment from those of you who are present and wish to speak. What we wish for you to do, however, when you come up is identify yourself with your name, with your address. You need to be a Blair County resident, um, or affiliated with a company in Blair County. So you can either state your name or, or your address or the company with which you are associated. And, um, you will have up to three minutes to present your, your comments regarding the opioid settlement. So I invite first person that would like to come speak, come on up. We have someone.
Good afternoon, commissioners. May I provide a handout?
Sure. That's great. Then we don't have tickets.
I won't start the clock until you get those handed down. No worries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, good afternoon. My name is Amy Martin Shanafeld. I reside at 171 Frederick Street, Tyrone, PA, 16686. Is there something additional or did I?
Nope, you got it.
Okay. I'm also the Executive Director of Blair Health Choices. And, uh, we contract with the state to manage the Medicaid program in Blair County for those that are in need of behavioral health services. We subcontract with managed care company, uh, Community Care. So some of the thoughts that we have had in looking at the opportunity to possibly pilot a program, um, we are requesting consideration for contingency management, which is an evidence based program that has been around for a very long time. But I think this is an opportunity now to partner with an agency that has really, uh, brought it up to speed with technology. And that is being able to use a mobile app to, to help support and incentivize individuals for various reasons. And a big part of, um, contingency management is to support compliance with treatment and retention, um, but also to support abstinence. So the program does that through the mobile app in, uh, making sure that they are adhering with treatment appointments. They can do that using the GPS on the app. There is check-ins, uh, check-outs, uh, various means that are in partnership with the person's provider. And then there's also, uh, substance testing that can be done through the mobile app and kits that are provided, um, to the individual. And lastly, there's, uh, progress measurements that occur. So there's, uh, surveys that they complete to measure their progress. And all of that, the idea of contingency management is to, uh, reward them by doing those tasks. And they can, uh, earn up to $30 a week, a maximum of $599. And that is put on a debit card, uh, which is limited. They cannot, uh, use it at certain locations like liquor stores, bars, casinos, or ATM machines, but obviously something available to them to purchase food, gas, things like that. The nice thing is, is this is all partnered with, uh, different supports, including cognitive behavioral treatment, which is also an evidence based program. So there's modules that they're able to complete, um, to help support them to deal with stress, triggers, cravings, boredom, loneliness, all the things that often lead, uh, someone back into addiction. And the other thing is this is paired with a lot of, uh, person to person support, peer to peer, someone else in recovery, is there available to help coach them, but also their family. So there's a lot of components to this program. And I've outlined, outlined here, the, the total cost to serve 100 individuals in our county would be $292,000.
Amy?
Yes.
Uh, it's been all three minutes, so you can just wrap up, please.
Okay. Absolutely. So sustainability, of course, would be, uh, through Health Choices, we would continue to work with the state, uh, paired with our medical.
Bye bye.
Funds.
It's okay. Keep going.
So yes, that, that's probably the big question and that is something we would work very closely with the state to be able to support ongoing if this shows success.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the handout too. Is there someone else that would like to speak?
Hello?
Hi. I'm Doug Egan from Holliesburg, Pennsylvania. I also sit on the board of the Salvation Army Adult Rehabilitation Center. And I was just, wanted to come today to, um, possibly have you consider the Salvation Army. I'm not really sure. A lot of people know a lot about the program. A lot of people don't know a lot about the program. The program is a six month program. I don't know if anybody was aware of that. It has a very high recovery rate and, um, they're a nonprofit and they struggle for monies. I talked to Mr. Urb and he had asked me what the money may be used for. And at the time I didn't really, he kind of took me off guard. But I know the captains that are running the rehab now, um, are trying to put together a learning center for the men. And that would be a very helpful thing. Anything would be helpful for them. You know, I've always thought nip the problem at the bud. And I can't think of a better place to start than the people that really need the help. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi. My name is Mary Ann Sinisi and I have the Families United for Change nonprofit in the area. I did submit an email to you and so did Michelle Lyman, who asked me to bring her letter as well today, in case you didn't receive those. She wanted to come today, but today is the seventh anniversary of her child's death. So obviously she does not feel up to this. Neither of us put any kind of figures or anything together on what we're asking, but we are, we are asking as the victims, the true victims. And everybody at this table knows, and probably many in this room know, that for 22 months I advocated to this group to make sure that we would have a table to have our voices heard as victims, losing our children. Nobody has ever followed up on that. Our opinions didn't seem to matter, based on what I read in the article last week, which I'm really devastated by. I can't believe that this is what you choose to spend the money on when there are true victims, instead of putting it into something that's punitive. We have lots of ideas and we welcome the chance to sit at a table and talk about things that would matter, instead of continuing the same pattern of punishment based treatment that does nothing for most of them. You might have some that make it through that, but the majority do not. It's a revolving door. And I personally, like I said, have asked for 22 months and I just feel like it was pushed away until the last minute and then you made a decision that didn't take into consideration any of us that lost, the true victims that were denied the chance to advocate or to ask for the money ourselves, instead of the government taking the money and doing what they wanted with it. Most of us who advocate are somebody that lost and we are willing to give it back to the community so that others don't suffer the loss that we do each and every day. So I ask that you look at what Michelle sent, what I sent, and perhaps have a table before you make any decisions on the future on this money and consider the real victims and not put it back into the system. You have a general fund for that. I don't understand why this money was used in such a way. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have additional comments?
One of, yeah, yeah, sure.
Hello. My name is Jordan Sesame Wild and I am president of a local nonprofit called Wild Ones Native Plants and Natural Landscapes, as well as a business owner, locally Ecotopian Earth Care. I specialize in, uh, creating community food forests, um, which we are looking for grants for currently to put into our parks and make a greenway bicycle trail system to go to all of those parks. After, uh, meeting with Mary Ann and being friends with her son, um, I found that it would be a really great idea to, uh, correlate these parks that are educational and to get people to come out that are struggling with substance abuse and, uh, families that have had loved ones pass away from substance abuse, to go into the parks in an educational way to meet and talk where it doesn't require spending money and, um, and bring community together, really. And it, it wouldn't cost too much money to have these parks, uh, in order. And, um, the community food forests are something that is becoming very popular among, uh, the nation. It teaches us to, to, that we can, that we can eat and thrive from the land that we live on in urban areas. And, uh, it really brings out older people, uh, middle aged people, younger people and children all alike together. And, uh, there's seasonal food and medicinal plants. And I, I feel connecting to nature brings a lot of peace to people. And, um, we can, we can do that in the city. And I feel that that would be a really great thing to do. And I've had synchronicities where I met a, a friend of mine from Lancaster in Costa Rica, uh, just met him. And he said that his dad is a deacon in Lancaster and, uh, that they work towards, uh, correlating church groups with, uh, community gardens and, um, that support, uh, substance abuse. So it's, it's been a theme in my life, uh, for the past month and I'm coming here because it feels right. And I, I hope to, uh, I hope to see this come together. And, um, I think that the plants have a lot to teach us and it's, it's perennial, they grow perennial and, um, there's different habitats within and it's a park-like environment that people can walk through. And, um, yeah, I, I, it's, I want to see more community gatherings together, uh, outside and where it's not a place to spend money. Like I said, um, I, I don't feel like we have enough of that. The education will bring in schools and, um, yeah, I would like to be a big brother in the, in the community and to be able to have maybe uncomfortable conversations with people and, uh, to, to be there to support them through that. And I feel that the garden is a perfect place for that. These gardens don't take much maintenance. They don't take water. They don't take raised beds. It's, it's all perennial and they're all native plants that are adapted to live in Pennsylvania. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes. I'd also like to say, um, I'm, I'm 31 now and I left when I was 22. I rode my bicycle across the United States. And a big reason that I left here and was gone for 10 years is because all of my friends were dying from heroin and substance abuse. And it scared me, so I had to leave. And I feel like a lot of my friends that don't get into substance abuse end up leaving to Pittsburgh or Colorado to get away from it. And I, I want to, I think that the garden, the community gardens will help bring us together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have another person? Come on up.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Judy Rosser with Blair Drug and Al, uh, Blair County Drug and Alcohol Programs Incorporated, uh, 16602, is it code? Blair, um, my name is Judy Rosser and, and I am the single county authority for Blair County around substance use disorder. We have a contract with the state and receive state and federal funds to help with needs assessment, capacity building, planning, implementation, and valuation of services that, um, are provided in the community with these states and federal funds. Acknowledging that, uh, the commissioners have a, a task here at hand with, um, the settlement dollars and Appendix E. It is a legal document that you do have to ensure that, uh, how you spend these monies and the reporting of these monies meet those criteria that were set up. When you look at Appendix E, um, we have made some roads in addressing those issues under Appendix E and expanding capacity with the state and federal funds that are available currently. But there's a list of things that we could do. How you prioritize that list would be up to the commissioners, but I would definitely, you know, take into consideration, is there, um, some type of commission that you could put together that helps drive? and appoints individuals that have invested interest in this issue in their community to be part of that, so that it's an informed decision that the commissioners could make. Some of the areas that, under the grant that we have, the grants we have, we have, like I said, expanded a lot of services, but there's a lot of work still to be done. Wraparound services for those that are engaged in services. We have over 114 people today on our waiting list for intensive case management. We've brought housing funding in, but there's still a need to provide a way to blend and braid funding that's available right now with our housing situation and improving housing stock that supports reentry from prison. It also supports those individuals that are on the street that are trying to receive services but have no safe place to stay. And we know that that's a high impact for relapse when they don't have a safe place to stay. So some of the things that I have here are recovery supports. A recovery community center is top of the list for our advisory group, which is Rise for Recovery in our community. We've had this on our plan, but again, resources. The settlement monies do provide much more flexibility of how you can spend the funds, which is purchasing buildings, which typically you can't do with grants. Street outreach to include education to our first responders to help with stigma reduction, but also screening and interventions, and then warm handoff to care. And then reimbursement for that increased scope of work with our first responder, our EMS workers. But ongoing training, because they have a workforce issue, just like all of us. We are continuing to hire people that need to be continually retrained. Evidence-based prevention training for prevention staff. Evidence-based therapy approaches. You heard about one of them here, but really, there are a myriad of them, but they are very expensive to implement and need those one-time costs to help us do trainers of trainers, people that we can instill in the community to be able to support that. Craft for families. Craft is an evidence-based model for education and therapy approaches to help integrate the family into the treatment approach with that individual that's suffering from a substance use disorder. Expansion of Narcan in our community to include dispensing units, which make it very accessible, especially in those geo-access areas where high overdose rates are. Narcan is right now supplied by the state, so that's not a cost you have to worry about. It would be the initial cost of those machines in our community, and the partnerships with partners in our community will let them be placed. Training for early intervention systems, pediatrics, identification and interventions for babies with neonatal system. We need training. We're done? Okay, imprison sustainability plan for medicated assisted treatment, and just expansion of the mother-child relationship and treatment. So there's quite a few ways. Reentry has a strategic plan. You need to be aware, there's things there that would impact substance use disorder and co-occurring disorders. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any additional comments?
Good afternoon. Thank you, everybody, for the work that you do. I am Ekna Hugh, and I am here on behalf of the Wild Ones, just as well.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to spell it out, because the reason why I'm speaking is because I really want to make sure that we are on your map for any funding that we can get. I am part of the Wild Ones in support of Mary Ann, whom I will be getting to know very well. And what we are, what Sesame, or Jordan said, is that we will be working at the Takahoe Park, and we're going to be doing a food forest. So I like numbers. I'm the numbers person. I want to make sure that if there are, if there's any funding out there, that you can please keep us in consideration. This is definitely something that personally, I strongly believe gathers people together, provides for community, just the same as when we sit down and have dinner with our friends and family. That always keeps us together. So I'll spell my first and last name, which includes my email. It's E as in Edward, K as in King, N as in Nancy, A as in Apple, H U E at gmail dot com. As I said, I do like numbers, so that's my background. That's how I am supporting the Wild Ones. I also do work with Jordan, and we are part of Ecotopia Earth Care. And this is how we are able to, through his business, also provide some free plants to the Takahoe Park and any other projects that may come forward that can help any of the SUDs people or substance abuse. I say people, but really victims, because they, we all, at some given point or another, have been exposed to it. And it's just something that is in our community and our life. And we need to work together in order to resolve this. So thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
I'm just going to share Jordan's cards, because if my email doesn't get transcribed properly, you can contact him and reach me.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else with any comments? All right then, this will close the public comment in-person portion of our meeting. Commissioner discussion. I think I actually already said what I, yeah. If you have anything you'd like to add, Commissioner Burke will add some more things.
Sure. I think, so when we originally scheduled this, we didn't realize that Commissioner Kessling was not going to be here. And I know luckily, we do tape the meeting, so he would be able to see that, thanks to Nate here. So he can, he can see your presentations later. But I think this is probably the first of at least a few discussions that we want to have. You know, I think we did feel like there hasn't really been a clear path for how people can apply for the money. I think that's something we still need to develop. So I think, you know, we've heard the idea of having a commission. We've heard, you know, requests for how do I apply? Is there a form we can fill out? And there isn't any of that yet, but this is kind of our starting point for how do we how do we decide and make these decisions going forward on how to get the rest of the money kind of out there. And as Mary Ann mentioned, you know, we did allocate money to county needs earlier. But I know for me personally, I do want to make sure that a good portion of it is out in the community where it is needed. You know, hopefully addressing some prevention needs, hopefully, you know, increasing our ability to help people in recovery, stay in recovery. So those are kind of my thoughts. I think this is kind of an initial conversation. That's what it was meant to be. But certainly, we want to have Commissioner Kessling able to hear all your comments as well and be involved in the process going forward. So I do see it just kind of as an initial, initial conversation.
Yes, I would certainly agree with that, which is why we asked for your comments, because we don't know where the community stands, what you're thinking, until you come here and you talk with us. So we appreciate the fact that you've been here, and you have shared your ideas and spent some time with us. We have comments, though, that have come in through the internet, email. Long terminology, sorry about that. And we will.
Some of them, I was going to try to put them in chronological order, but I was going with however, Hallis Allison has them in the folder here. I'll start. This one is from Hallis. It's from the Holliesburg American Legion Ambulance Services from their EMS chief, Robert Craig. This letter is in regard to the National Opioid Settlement. Holliesburg American Legion Ambulance Service, herein after referenced "Hallis", which I appreciate, because I will not be able to say that many times, is a nonprofit ambulance organization that serves a large area of Blair County. We also serve areas of Bedford and Huntington Counties. We are PA Department of Health licensed ALS, which is Advanced Life Support Systems, and intermittent life support, and also BLS, which is Basic Life Support. We get no payments from municipalities nor taxes. Our sole payment is from the insurance companies. We bill, and payment back is way below what we bill. Each example, if we bill a patient's insurance for $1,800, we may get $500 or $600 reimbursement for that bill or lower. One specific piece of very expensive equipment that we use is a cardiac monitor. The cardiac monitor allows us to monitor a patient's heart rhythm, determine if they are having a heart attack, send the 12 lead ECG to the receiving hospital, so they are, in turn, can activate the cath lab, which cuts down on a lot of time for the patient in getting the definitive care they need. The cardiac monitor also assists EMS with monitoring an airway when a patient is intubated with the end tidal volume. This is a tool used to let EMS know if the patient is getting ventilated properly or if ROSC, or return to spontaneous circulation, is obtained during a cardiac arrest situation. The cardiac monitor also does basic monitoring, such as blood pressure assessment, pulse ox readings, and basic cardio monitoring during a chest pain call. EMS has several protocols that require cardiac monitoring during patient care. These examples are as follows. Patient experience in opioid overdose, cardiac monitoring is used to monitor airway and heart monitoring prior to and after Narcan administration. Second one is any patient with chest pain. Third is trauma patients. Four is short of breath calls, COPD, or asthma patients. Five are burn patients with possible airway issues. Six are altered mental status. Seven is patient suspected with a severe infection. Eighth is pediatric patients. Or nine is interfacility transports from one hospital to another for a higher level of care. That would be an example of a cardiac patient taken to Nason who needs open-heart surgery, not available at Nason, and would require a cardiac monitor to be transferred. Paramedics have standing orders or protocols that the PA Department of Health sets forth, and most of the ALS protocols have standing orders which require the application and use of a cardiac monitor when the paramedic is treating the patient. All of the calls above account, all of the calls above, meaning the nine examples, account for 85% of all the calls Hallis does in a yearly basis. Our call volume is 5,000 plus a year. Hallis has recently purchased seven new cardiac monitors to replace the old ones. The new monitors are ZOLL, and are updated monitors with cellular and Bluetooth capabilities, allowing us to transmit information from on-scene to the hospital, allowing physicians to prepare for care or make sure the right personnel are waiting for EMS with immediate emergency care when we arrive at the hospital. The monthly payment for these monitors is $1,580, and the total purchase price for these monitors and service agreement is $180,000. Hallis is looking for a monetary donation of $160,000 to help pay these monitors off and ease their financial burden. Thank you for consideration, and it's signed, Robert Craig, chief. The second call, or, I'm sorry, the second public comment is from John Grove. Dear sir and madam, I'm giving this input from the perspective of recovery counseling for Blair County inmates who are addicted to substance and imprisoned for that or other offenses. There is too much time for inmates with nothing to do. There is an in-prison, pre-release substance abuse treatment group, but it's limited in number to 12 participants. One-on-one treatment with a clinical therapist, I'm sorry, who has experienced in drug, in dual diagnosis problems of inmates could be a constructive use of inmate time. It has been my experience in doing rounds at the prison that these groups, these existing groups do not serve all inmates who need substance abuse or mental health treatment. Many of those inmates awaiting referrals to other treatment facilities after release would be helped by constructive treatment planning while in prison to construct a relapse prevention plan. I can see no better use of the funds coming to Blair County than for treatment while in prison for inmates. There are rooms where one-on-one counseling could be private and confidential. I would recommend a licensed clinical social worker or professional counselor be hired to provide exclusively these services, and of course, follow-up referral for outpatient-inpatient treatment after inmates are released. This is a professional position that would require compensation that corresponds to their expertise. I realize that pay comparisons with county employees could be a problem. But to get the right kind of services, you could pay an equitable pay scale. This could be independent from county employees, and instead of be overseen by the Drug and Alcohol Program at Blair County. And again, signed by John Grove, volunteer of the Blair County Prison Society. This is from Mary Ann Sinisi, who we've heard speak already today. Paloma is a word used to describe a parent who has lost a child. Families United for Change is a community of parents like myself who lost a child to the mental health and substance misuse crisis currently plaguing our country. Some of us watched our children slowly die over years, while others didn't even suspect their children were suffering. And all of us will live the remainder of our lives with unrelenting grief and guilt. Due to stigma and shame, there are countless numbers of grieving parents who are suffering in silence and isolation, many being diagnosed with broken heart syndrome and complex post-traumatic stress disorder. Without access to supportive community, one of my fears is this widespread trauma will continue to fuel the mental health and substance misuse crisis currently plaguing our country and be passed on to future generations. It has been documented that the most painful experience a parent can live through is child loss. I am here to tell you that this is an absolute truth, no matter the age or manner of death. Yet too often, stigma parents, stigma prevents, I'm sorry, stigma prevents us from being supported in traditional child loss environments. And there is no, I'm sorry, there is a general lack of compassion for us as if our loss is somehow less tragic. We know that the most effective therapeutic model for child loss is peer support, and far too many parents are suffering alone. We need public gardens in every community affected by this crisis so that loved ones can come out of isolation and begin to heal together. The Circle of Hope Garden was started in Blair County in 2020 as a sign of hope as well as remembrance for those struggling with substance use disorders and those who have been lost as a result. With the idea, this can be a nature-based, safe place for families as well. Research has found that nature-based therapeutic models improve patient self-esteem, decreases depression, improves motivation, decreases healthcare consumption, and increases mental well-being. An expansion of the Circle of Hope Garden to include a labyrinth to promote social activities and a safe space for those seeking connections and support related to SUD is essential. This research-based approach would be beneficial for our country as a whole and also include a space for events to occur that will disseminate information and overdose awareness, on overdose awareness, as well as provide naloxone at no cost. This directly correlates to asks in Exhibit E, including numbers 10 and 12 on Page E6. This beautiful space was created to hold support groups, educate community members and first responders, and to have a central, safe space to distribute information on prevention and treatment and reduce the stigma associated with substance use disorders. I understand that Altoona has been awarded a large settlement from the lawsuit led against pharmaceutical companies for their unethical business practices. Parents like myself hope these lawsuits are a step forward in providing necessary support towards preventing this epidemic from taking more lives. Unfortunately, across the country, the needs of victims have not been considered. Many of us feel those funds are the closest we will get to justice for our children. Yet there are many barriers to individuals having the ability to file personal injury claims against these companies, including statutes of limitation, proof of unobtainable pharmacy records, and a lack of attorneys who are willing to represent us due to stigma associated with SUD and mental health issues. Also, many parents lack the financial resources to handle the cost of a legal battle against a corporation. Parents are asking for our life-shattering losses to be validated and respected. If you are conflicted over whether a certain population is or isn't a victim, I ask you to consider the hypocrisy of accepting funds on behalf of victims who've grieved is not being acknowledged. There are billions of dollars available to abate this epidemic, but the most profound impacted victims are being left out. Today, I am asking you to commit an annual donation of $100,000 to my organization. Over the duration of time, you will receive these funds, as well as any future opioid-related funds you receive in the future. These funds will be used to create public memorial gardens across the country, including here in Pennsylvania. Many parents could not afford a burial. Their children's remains are in urns. These families need a place to go where they can memorialize their children by planting flowers and trees, where they can place memorial plaques and have a safe place to grieve with others who share their devastating loss. Parents need a connection and a place to build a community with other grievers. These gardens would allow that connection. They will also be a place of public education regarding this opioid epidemic. Gardens are calming, safe places that will attract many helping to humanize SUDs. Gardens are calming, safe places that will attract many helping to humanize S U D as those walking through have the opportunity to speak with parents and read the memorials to those lost. I am asking you to not lose sight of the direct harm caused to families like mine. Close your eyes and think of how you would feel if your child died from a misunderstood disease and monies from the pharmaceutical companies that contributed to his death were not spent on services that would save others and recognize the need for survival parents, surviving parents to heal. I'm happy to discuss this further and look forward to hearing from you as soon as possible as this urge, as this is an urgent need. Sincerely, Mary Ann Sneasey. This is a public comment from Michelle Lyneum. Blair County Commissioners, I'm writing regarding the county's plan for the opioid settlement dollars. I feel inclined to speak on the subject as a portion of that money is the result of the death of my only son, Gregory James Lyneum. I am not able to be with you in person today as this day marks the seventh, seventh anniversary of Greg's death on March twenty-eighth, twenty seventeen. Needless to say, it's a difficult day for me. To read that a substantial amount of this money is proposed to be used for courthouse expenses is disheartening to say the least, although I applaud the consideration of medical, medication-assisted treatment for treatment of prisoners and recently released prisoners, this seems to be the only sensible allocation of funds being considered. While I think Drug Court is an excellent program, which I wholeheartedly support, I don't think the payment of salaries and benefits of staff is what those funds should be earmarked for. These funds exist because hundreds of thousands of parents like me have buried our children due to the irresponsibility of big pharmaceutical companies that flooded our streets with poison while our sons and daughters were children. Many of our children have left behind their own children upon their passing. Has anyone there researched your area for programs aimed at helping families of those lost to overdoses? There are many family members of those lost here in your community trying to make a difference with their own funds or the funds they are lucky enough to obtain through the generosity of service providers and individuals with a heart for our suffering. I think the opioid settlement monies could be better spent through efforts to support local recovery in our local communities, assistance with funeral expenses, programs for the children of the lost of, for children of the lost of the overdose, of, for the lost of the loved ones, I'm sorry, support of the homeless, addicted, and those suffering with mental health issues. This would be a much more honorable approach and much less offensive to the families that have endured these hearts, heart-wrenching losses. Here are a few Blair County programs you might consider, and there's a list, I'll provide that to you. Lost Angel Blessing Bags, Blair County International Overdose Awareness Day Event, Pro A, United by Hope Quilt Project, The Circle of Hope Monument, Ben Blessed. There are many more worthy causes being addressed right here in Blair County that are funded by the generosity of peers. Perhaps some of the funding in question could be used towards any or all of these programs directly connected to the losses in our community. It would seem to be more fitting than covering county employees' salaries and perks. Thank you for the opportunity to offer my thoughts on the county's use of the funds in question. I appreciate your careful and thoughtful consideration to determine, to determine the programs which deserve some funding from the settlement award due to our devastating loss. Most sincerely, Michelle Lyneum. And the last letter for today is from Alicia Albertson. Thank you for the opportunity to share some suggestions on how funds may additionally benefit the community. As a person who has worked in the field of substance use disorder for over a decade as well as someone who is actively in recovery from O U D, I believe there are numerous ways these funds can be utilized to support our community. One glaring way to benefit both the addicted themselves, the family, and the various systems who interact with one another is to provide increased training, compensation, and incentives to those who engage with O U D individuals daily to form a collaborative, multidisciplinary approach to treating addiction. It is no secret that our sheriff's department has a high rate of turnover amongst its employees, particularly deputies, and part of that reason is because they are grossly underpaid with minimal ongoing training for the dangerous and tedious work they set out to do. Because of this turnover, there are often new deputies with little on-the-job training and experience interacting with the community, specifically those who struggle with O U D in various capacities every single day. The sheriff's department in particular interacts with inmates, serves bench warrants, assists across jurisdictional jurisdictions as a means to support multiple police departments, handles evictions, and a multitude of other circumstances that directly require them to engage with persons who struggle with S U D. While seasoned individuals in the department may have increased knowledge on how to engage with O U D persons, there is a level of burnout and secondary trauma that comes with managing the burning, the burden of training and working with a consistently changing staff on a high, already high-stress job for wages that barely cover the cost of living basic needs. With that being said, those who have stuck with the department and those newer deputies coming on would greatly benefit from an increase in education, compensation, and incentives to not only be retained and trained in this role appropriately, but also create an environment where burnout is less likely increasing compassionate interactions, linkages to treatment needs, and overall safer communities in which we live. Utilizing the opioid settlement funds to support this request means specific training for the department such as evidence, evidence-based practices like motivational interviewing, diversion programs that support the expansion of warm handoff efforts, and harm reduction techniques like ongoing naloxone training and utilization to decrease overdose, overdose death rates in Blair County. Because a flat increase in pay may not fit into the parameters of Exhibit E, we could incentivize offers who are willing, officers who are willing to participate in training such as these or others identified best practices or other identified best practices around O U D by supporting an increase in pay to support members of the department being, coming so specialized in how to approach, engage, and refer those who struggle with O U D to appropriate treatment services. This is a dire need as it would be a much more therapeutic approach to supporting those with O U D as opposed to arresting an individual, for example, with a bench warrant who returned only, who return only spends twenty-four to seventy-two hours in B C P, which we know as Blair County Prison, with little to no treatment support for anyone unsentenced, and then released back into the community to continue their use at an increased risk of overdose and start the cycle over again. I can only imagine how frustrating this is for law enforcement, law enforcement, and I personally have watched this occur with a loved one three times until they were ultimately sentenced and released back into the community with no S U D services set up and no door-to-door transfer for treatment needs. This has to change. The one way to support this is increasing S U D education, increasing compensation and incentives for becoming an expert in engaging with those with an opioid use disorder. This supports a collaborative effort in decreasing our overpopulated jail, increasing access to treatment needs, retention of seasoned deputies who are well-trained, a decrease in burnout and secondary trauma resulting from the opioid epidemic, a positive view of law enforcement, and more compassionate interactions with O U D individuals, as well as a decrease in overdose dose death rates. Data can be kept on the number of individuals trained within the department. Retention within the office can also be tracked to see if an increase occurs. The number of Narcan doses can also be easily tracked, as well as the number of warm handoffs completed through collaborative efforts with Blair S C A, which is the Single County Authority, and treat, and local treatment providers can be calculated. With the funds being dispersed over a number of years, the increase in pay is sustainable for those willing to complete the additional training provided. This will be incredibly beneficial for so many people beyond the individual receiving the incentive and compensation, specifically the person struggling with O U D being engaged with compassion and provided with treatment opportunities. The call to work in law enforcement is not an easy one, but one that impacts the lives of others in so many positive ways. We need to encourage, I'm sorry, we need to ensure we retain great officers through the ranks and not only cultivate a safer community in which we live, but to generate an outlook that our law enforcement officers are not only here to protect and serve, but help, treat, and support those in need as well. Additionally, I have attached sections of Exhibit E to justify these costs and support the need, needed changes within the Blair, Blair County. Sincerely, Dr. Alicia Albertson. That concludes the written public comment for today.
Well, that concludes our discussion for today. I do not know when we will have a follow-up, if we will do that next Thursday or a later date, but we will certainly announce that and let everyone know. We will make, make sure that's publicized, hopefully in the newspaper and on other media sources as we notify them. So thank you all for your participation. Is there a motion to adjourn our meeting today?
There's not a motion. We got to call, we got to circle back around to Don.
That's right.
He is available. Yep, yep, he's available.
Okay. Okay.
I did, I hung up, I'm so sorry. Here we go.
Oh, that's okay. Hi.
You have Commissioner Webster and Burke to your left and right. I believe they've.
All right. I'm stuck in the middle.
Yep. Stuck in the middle of us, huh?
All right. Well, good afternoon.
Thanks, Don, for, for taking our call. You are the person who can tell us the most about this information, this I T request involving the state.
Oh, yeah.
Grant that they want to give us. Apparently they have particular programs that, products rather, cybersecurity products that they want to provide to the county at no cost, which would replace what we currently have, or we can opt out of their program and continue using our products that we have chosen. But I believe they don't give us any kind of financial assistance in that. So we had a couple of questions. I will, Attorney Burke, or I'm sorry, see, I'm still doing that. Commissioner Burke will ask her questions first.
Sure. And Don, I'm sorry, because I don't know if you know even all the answers to these, but is this?
Sure. I'll try.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Is this like kind of a one-shot deal, like either we're in or we're out? I know we, we noticed it's funded through twenty twenty-seven, but is this kind of our only chance to decide one way or the other?
Yes, with the exception of, so they, they are expecting to have an answer back, a formal answer back on April first by four o'clock. They did suggest that if the paperwork couldn't be signed by them, that we could just indicate which direction we're leaning, but they didn't give any idea of how much additional time we would have to weigh the options. But yes, you're, you're correct. It's federally funded, grant dollars given to the Commonwealth, they're deciding what process or products to buy, and then they're just handing them back to the counties and say, well, here you go. And when we respond and say, hey, that's really great, we've got our own products, we didn't sit around and wait for the Commonwealth to come in and bless us, we took care of it proactively and have for a number of years, but can we have those grant dollars to spend on what we currently have? We waited a couple of days for the answer to be no. What they would allow us to do is take that money and go buy the same products ourselves, and we would pay twenty percent of the cost, which kind of is nonsensical. The grant program does not allow you to supplant the grant dollars or your general fund dollars with the grant dollars. So if it was an expense, if you're in the middle of a contract or an expense that is budgeted for this year, you also can't use those funds to replace those general fund dollars. So it's yucky. That's a technical term.
Do you know anything about the products that they are proposing that we use?
Yeah, so on Program One is the M S Albert Sensor. M S Albert Sensor is a piece of hardware that was given to us three years or so ago under the veil of election security. So the state required all the counties that had election offices to use this device that the state had provided. We at the time didn't want it. We had Arctic Wolf, but it was one of those things, well, it's for election security, so tough no use. So we put it in, we have been using that for those number of years, and it is a direct replica of what the Arctic Wolf service is doing. The second service is, that's the M S Albert, the second product is COFENSE. We don't use COFENSE in the county, we use NO Before, and that's the same type of thing, it's security awareness training, phishing tests, that sort of thing. So again, another competitive product to what the county went with with NO Before. And as an asterisk there, the M S Albert doesn't cost the county anything, never has. Of course, the Arctic Wolf cost now is about ninety thousand dollars a year for everything that Arctic Wolf's doing. So that's numbers one and number two. I believe number three is, I forget exactly what they call it, but the product is, I think it's vulnerability management. That's through the product called Tenable. I'm not personally familiar with Tenable, but it would be the exact same thing as what Arctic Wolf's doing with their managed risk product. So we have, Arctic Wolf is the company name, but we have a bunch of products within that, so we simplify and call it Arctic Wolf. So that takes care of projects one, three, and four, and the fourth and final one is the security event management solution called Splunk. Again, that's a competitor product to Arctic Wolf. Now, one big star here that I think will be important for the discussion is each of these products on their own is a separate thing. So you manage Splunk separately and individually, you manage Tenable separately and individually, COFENSE is a separate product that you manage, and then the M S Albert Sensor is something you work with the Commonwealth I T folks on. So if you were to say, great, let's just get rid of Arctic Wolf and go with these products, the thing that Arctic Wolf does for us right now is it's one solution all combined, it's all things to all of us. So we go to one dashboard and we see all that information, one simple thing, we don't configure eight different pieces of equipment, it's one thing that does, you know, all of these things. So, so am I familiar with them? I know what they are, I know what they do. I know that Splunk is all the rage for the cybersecurity professionals, guys that are cybersecurity trained, use Splunk day in and day out. It would not be a tool that we would sit and, you know, watch in I T actively because it's not that kind of thing. It's not, it's not pretty or fancy or makes anything simple. It's really, you've got to have the knowledge to, to use the product. But they are all competitor products to what we currently have.
So we don't really know if they work as well as or not as well as, or, because you don't really have experience with them.
Yeah, right. I, I would be willing to tell you now, when we invest in, when we, R B A, first investigated Arctic Wolf, we compared Arctic Wolf to competitors at the time, and there was nobody that was able to do the complete coverage like Arctic Wolf did. You know, because all their products are combined and it's one security team that we talked to, you know, if you have a, so Splunk's just a tool. So it's Splunk, if you're looking through Splunk and it, there's a cybersecurity alert of some type within the Splunk application, Splunk doesn't do anything to help you with that, you don't talk to a human being, it's just like, oh, okay, there's an alert here. So you've got to be actively monitoring that. Part of what, same with Tenable, you've got to access the system and say, you know, what are my vulnerabilities, yada, yada. What Arctic Wolf is doing for the county is really giving you cybersecurity professionals that you don't currently have on your I T team. So they are, you know, I pick up the phone and call Arctic Wolf and say, hey, I got this alert, what's it mean, what do I need to do? And they provide the specific direction as to, here's what we're seeing, is it a big deal, no, here's what we think you should do. And then they are basically partners in that for us. There's also specific insurance they're providing as part of their contract that basically if, if a bad thing happens, we have the ability to pick up the phone and call them and they'll start helping us without jumping through a bunch of. start helping us without jumping through a bunch of hoops, you know, initially, because now, you know, at that point, you don't want to be talking about contract language and those types of details, you want somebody to get to work. So, the specific, the separate products aren't going to do any of those things for us. So, we don't really consider them a competitor product, because Arctic Wolf is more of a service than it is a product.
So, because these things don't work cooperatively with you, if we accepted what the state wants us to use, it would actually be an additional drain on the resources of RBA in terms of time and trying to figure this all out and that...
That's exactly right, that's exactly right. And then you have the additional issue of, you know, what's your process look like? You know, you have Splunk running in your environment, great, it's kind of like having an alarm system, but it only works if you're watching the alarm system light turn on. And if you miss it, the light turned on and you blinked, or you looked away, or you went to the bathroom, well, too late, you know, so sorry for you, you didn't catch it. Whereas, Arctic Wolf is kind of doing more of the, you know, monitoring of the security system, "Oh, there's a security alarm, we need to call the police, we need to do X, Y, and Z." So, that's kind of a little bit of a comparison, but you're absolutely right, having more products, you know, it's just going to further drain the types of things that we're doing.
And I guess I don't suppose that the state is providing that person like Arctic Wolf that you would call when one of their systems alerts you to something?
Right, that's correct, they don't. So, now, to be fair to the state, that's a little bit of an unfair statement that I just said. So, what they're doing is the MS Albert Sensor notifies you that there was an issue, and this has happened to us. They notify us and they say, "There's an issue on this computer at this time, you need to go investigate it." And we do that, that's fine, but it's just very one-way. Arctic Wolf, running in parallel, we don't get notified for that. And the reason for that is, is because MS Albert Sensor says it saw this activity, go investigate it. Arctic Wolf says, "Ooh, we saw this activity, let's see what actually happened." So, without us having to go check the firewall, Arctic Wolf already knows, "Oh, yeah, that computer tried to get to a bad site, but the county's firewall blocked it, it's a non-issue, it's a non-event." So, they just forget it, we're never notified, it just comes and goes, no sweat. So, that's kind of, it's very one-way, but the state is hedging their bets on the utilization of the ISAC organization to help with that. So, I've used them, not in Blair County, in another county where there was a potential breach, we were not notified, we notified them, we think that there's something bad that happened, and they will perform a forensic investigation of what we thought happened, but it's on their own time, it's no cost, but it's, you're waiting, you need to get an engineer assigned, and that's all through the ISAC, which is the multi-state information something, something, security thing, which I'm trying to get on the board of. So, there, so if the state were answering that question, they'd say, "Oh, yes, of course, we'll help you, you would just not call the Commonwealth, you would call this ISAC group and get into their workflow."
In your, so, have you, have you, you've gotten either phone call or emails or whatever contact from the state, does the information that they have provided to you so far, does it indicate whether they're, they seem to be moving towards requiring all of the counties to use these particular products at some point in the future, or, or did they even make any indication one way or the other?
Right, that's a really good question, I don't know the answer. It would seem to me that the state's position on this is, "We, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, have a lot of great resources and a lot of great tools, and boy, it would be great if we didn't have to pay for them. And, oh, look, there's federal grant dollars available to help us with that." So, they went out and the Commonwealth got these grant dollars to help offset their costs for their cybersecurity needs, you know, with a big team of cybersecurity professionals. And then they said, "Wow, this would be really great, these counties don't have anything, some of these counties aren't doing anything," which is true. So, boy, wouldn't it be great if we could share the wealth from these federal dollars? And that's what they've done. So, will they come forward later and say, "You're now required to use these tools"? I can't imagine they could do that because of the people investment that's required. Because at some point, you know, if you said to me, "Dawn, this is really great, we spent a lot of money on Arctic Wolf, the state's giving us competitor products that may or may not be better, but they're definitely cheaper, and we're going to use those," and that could be a decision that you make, and that would be okay, and that would be fine, things would change a bit, but the amount of time that IT would spend with those, with those products, those utilities, that's going to be the make-break for you. You know, right now, Dawn, how much time do you spend on cybersecurity per week? We have a dashboard that we access that tells us what are your top threats, and that's where we focus our attention. If I had a utility that just threw a bunch of stuff at the wall and I had to determine what's the priority, what's the most important thing, then, you know, just naturally, more time is going to be spent doing that. And, you know, we're already time constrained and those sorts of things. So, I can't imagine the state will require the use of them, because it would also require them to have IT people, and some counties still don't have IT departments, keep in mind. So, uh, so I don't think so, but clearly, they're putting everybody over a barrel now. And I'll just editorialize for one quick second, I've been very combative over the years with C cap in particular, and now the state and these grant folks, I think it's outrageous that Blair County's in this position to have to decide what to do with quote-unquote "free" money, when the county has already made investments proactively to protect the citizens of the county and your financial interests, when other counties have not, and now they're being rewarded for not doing that. You know, really what it tells the commissioner later is, "We're not going to make that decision now, because perhaps, perhaps later, the state will give that to us." And who wants to make decisions like that, particularly in information security? So, you know, it's a little frustrating, they hit us with this last minute. You may recall, we signed a similar letter just a few months ago, a consent agreement with the state, and they were only doing Programs 1 and 2, Projects 1 and 2, the MS ISAC Albert Sensor and the COFENSE. And we did indicate that we were going to do that, simply because it was better to have it than not have it, and COFENSE, we can choose not to use, because we have another product, or not out anything, and the MS Albert Sensor can just sit there. You know, it notifies us great, and then when we get notified, we just kick it to Arctic Wolf and say, "Hey, is this legit or not?", and then we make Arctic Wolf have to sort out, you know, whether that works or not. So, now they've just added two additional programs, and it's funded through 2027, which is even more frustrating, because you're stuck, you know, you're not going to get a year in and say, "We'd really rather have this tool."
Right, and we don't know if they would then, after 2027, start a new round of grants and even let us be a part of it or not, or who knows?
Right, 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 yep, yep, that's correct.
Yeah, I mean, I think they could...
Yep, go ahead, sorry.
They could choose after 2027 not to pursue that again, and then we'd have to surprise, put that back in our budget after bringing it out. I also, I'm taking issue here, and I don't know if this is our wording or if this came directly from their request, but I'm not sure how the state, so, yes, we are a creature of the state, like the state created the counties, right, so we're a creature of state government, but we're also an independent municipality, and I don't understand how they, this is worded, these products would replace the current system that the county uses, so I'm not sure how they can force, are they trying to force us to do that?
The wording is...
Well, that, I think you're responding, you're looking at the email that the, that the young lady from the state had sent me back, is that what you're referencing?
It's, that's how it's worded on our agenda.
Okay, okay. So, there was an email that came back from somebody at the state, I'd asked some additional questions, particularly, "I've already got products, does this finally mean I can take 80% of those grant dollars and fund what we already have?", because the commissioners would love to only pay 20% of that cost. And they had responded and basically said, not that it would replace, though it could replace, that would be a decision, they're basically saying, "This would be in addition to what you currently do." And that's got to be better security, right? That's essentially what their stance was. So, it doesn't need to replace, it could, but the decision right now for the board is really just, do you want to accept it or opt out of it? There's no sense in being a sub-grantee on the application, because we just have to go source our own products, and what's the point of that? And pay 20%. So, your option is opt in and take it, and then decide later on whether you're going to allow that to replace Arctic Wolf. You're in the middle of a two-year contract, or, I'm sorry, you're in the middle of a three-year contract, this is year two of our three-year contract with Arctic Wolf, so we are bound by that, but you could theoretically...
There's no exit.
Get this in place, and then make your decision about Arctic Wolf come 2026, as to whether you want to continue your Arctic Wolf product or not.
There's no exit from Arctic Wolf?
Uh, there is not, we signed a contract with them last year, would have been the first year, because we wanted to lock in their price increases. So, basically, that first year, there was no increase, and then smaller increases for Years 2 and 3.
I remember that, yes, yeah.
Yep, yep. And then also, you should know, the Know Before, which is our security awareness product in the county, that's handling our cybersecurity training for new employees, it's also doing those phishing tests, where we kind of test and see how people are doing. Know Before, the county paid a one-year cost for a three-year agreement, and then, at the last minute, I got them to add a fourth year for free. So, we got four years of Know Before product for the cost of one year, which I'm quite proud of, so you're kind of locked in on that. You know, there's no, there's no win for you to drop that now and switch over to COFENSE, particularly since, you know, Know Before's already configured and running for us, and we just throw that out to do something else.
And realistically, there's no way to quantify at this point the amount of additional work that, that RBA might have to do, and what the cost of that would be to the county in order to make a comparison of, "Oh, you know, free versus, oh, but it's not really, because now..."
Right, right, yeah, yeah, you're catching on pretty well there, I think you're right about that. RBA doesn't ever really like to be the guy that come back to the checkbook and say, "Hey, if you want to do this, it's going to cost you more." But probably the harder conversation, that's probably an easy conversation in comparison to the, "Okay, prioritize for us, where do you want us to spend our time? You know, is it, is it X, Y, or Z?", and understanding that if you pick Y, X, and Z are really unhappy with you. And at that point, you may say, "Well, I'd rather spend my way out of this, so I can do just X, Y, and Z all together." But yes, from a, my concern, as your guy that's there every day, is the Arctic Wolf product right now really does allow the county to move forward with very technical, very precise guidance, recommendations, based solely upon cybersecurity, not the politics of the county, not what makes sense for this department or that department, we're using them as a cybersecurity expert. And without the Arctic Wolf Service, we lose that. RBA doesn't have on-staffed cybersecurity experts. We can find those people, but they're pretty expensive, so Arctic Wolf allows us to do that without any additional cost. So, we get, you know, kind of a lot of different expertise as well as products, so that I can report on vulnerabilities, so we can be strategic and precise on what we're working on. And I'm afraid these other tools would not allow us to do, wouldn't be, allow us to be as precise with how we spend our time, which would be a concern.
Do you have any other questions?
No, I think that's everything for me.
Okay, do you have any questions, Nicole? All right.
Well, I will, I will say, in not really knowing how to word this on the agenda, that was, I was assuming that if we took over, like, state products, that we would drop our current services, but I guess I didn't think about, we could continue those, so it doesn't have to be, so the wording on the agenda probably is, it isn't, it isn't correct, we wouldn't have to do that, but...
That's okay.
The more important part is, are we doing Option 1 or Option 2?
Yes, that's, that's correct, that is the decision for the day, and there's no problem at all coming back later and saying, "Okay, we've done Option A, what makes sense for us?" You know, I can request demos of the products, and we can spend some time evaluating them to see kind of what the, what the differences are and what we think that divide is, to be a little bit more specific in our answer about how much time and those sorts of things. I don't really like the county paying $100,000 a year for Arctic Wolf, even though I think it's worth every dollar. It's just discouraging to me that the state can't say, "These cybersecurity dollars can be used for..." Like, there were emails where they wanted an IT project plan to describe our use of the products and all those things, and I said, "Great, finally, they're going to let us use those dollars, I'll be able to return $100,000 to the general fund this year," only for them, after a couple of days, to respond and say, "No, if you're a sub-grantee, you must purchase the exact same products that are specified," which, again, what's, what's the point, now you're paying 20%. So, it's just really, really disappointing for this kind of money and for this period of time, 2027, I know we say, "Time moves fast in IT world," but to be locked into something till 2027 is pretty unusual. Products change, don't know what the new cybersecurity landscape will be in two years' time, so it's a little bizarre, it's very little bizarre, and understanding that the state's able to use this, because they've got, you know, comparatively infinite resources and manpower to do it, and those tools work right for them, and they don't care about anything else, is also very, very off-putting. So, sorry, I'm editorializing again, but it's just very frustrating.
That's okay. All right, okay, well, do you want to stay on the phone, or do you want to leave us?
Well, if you want to go ahead and, if there's a motion to one way or the other, Option 1 or Option 2, it would be helpful to, for Dawn to hear the outcome, so that way, over his long holiday weekend, he, because this is due April 1st, he can go ahead and work on that grant application, which I use the term "grant" loosely if we choose the other option.
Yeah, that's correct, yep.
So, um, did I hear you correctly that we can opt in and then change our mind within a short period of time, I assume?
Um, if you opt in, you probably can't opt out later, they'll basically list this, but what they'll do is they'll give us a little bit of time to think it over, if you'd prefer that. I could just say to them, you know, "Hey, this is going to come up for a discussion on the Tuesday agenda, so you'll have to wait until then. It seems we're leaning this way, but we won't be sure until, you know, the commissioners have had time to think through it and talk through it." So, we could, we could kind of punt temporarily to make a decision, and then as far as, once you opt in, I don't think you can, you know, say, "In a year, you know, I want back out."
Oh, but, so I didn't mean in a year, because you had mentioned something about getting the opportunity to try their products and see what you saw.
Oh, yeah, 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 so if you opt in, you know, there's certainly a decision here where you opt in and you take what they give you and you never use it. You know, you're, you're playing ball with the state, you know, if there's complimentary services, we'll use them, but, you know, something like COFENSE, we would just never configure or never use, because we had Know Before. You know, that's certainly an approach that you can take, and what that does is you're opting in, that's good, and then, "Hey, IT, let's evaluate this." So, when our Know Before contract comes up, you know, in three years' time, we're in a better position to say whether we should be using the COFENSE product or not, and here are the reasons why. Same with your Arctic Wolf, it would give you an opportunity to evaluate their other options and see how they compare to Arctic Wolf, so that you can make a decision at the end of next year, do we want to continue Arctic Wolf, or are we just going to use the state stuff? So, it does allow you to do that, would give us room that way.
Can I clarify, because I think we started throwing around, like, something like an 80/20 match, so is it, it is completely free, though, what the state's...
Yeah, if you opt in, it's 100%. Yeah, if you opt in, it's 100% grant paid for.
So we wouldn't be, yeah, using any of our funds that aren't scheduled or budgeted for this?
That's correct. That's right. Yep, it's all grant dollars, 100%.
So it, so really it would just be a decision of if we opted in later down the road, do we continue paying for know before and Arctic Wolf? But like you said, we've already pretty much committed to paying those for at least a couple of years.
Yeah, that's correct. And, and one of the comments I had made to Nicole Allison was, you know, for the board, the decision is, is there any political benefit to opting out? You know, to basically making a statement to them that, you know, we just don't like this. And if enough counties opted out, does that send a clear message? Is there any value in that? But it would not allow you to revisit that later. So you're kind of committing yourself to additional dollars, you know, after 2025, which you may not want to do, or the next board may not want to do. So that's, that's the rub.
Well, I don't, I don't think they listen to us, truthfully.
I understand that. They certainly have not listened to me. That's, that's for sure.
And again, I think it's important to note, like, we do, I don't know if we still have MS Albert, but for at least a couple of years there, we did have MS Albert running with Arctic Wolf as well. So it's not an unknown situation as far as that goes, as far as using those.
Correct. Yes, we are still using both, yep.
Right, I was going to say, we still have to use it for the elections, right?
Yeah, I don't, they, they kind of waived that requirement and some counties did have it removed. They thought it was election-related on a, in a bad way, so they had it removed. But we're still using it today. That's still in production. And that's what you would have approved a few months ago on another consent agreement with the state to utilize grant dollars for that.
Well, I don't like this either. And, and I think that they're, I think that, you know, this is like terrible parenting, really. You know, you don't, you don't reward your kid that didn't look to the future. I mean, that doesn't make any sense, but I don't know.
Yeah, from a public policy standpoint, they have not figured out the carrot and stick approach here, I don't think. But I mean, I guess I also, I think with the knowledge that we can keep the products we know and like, if we opt in, I guess that takes away for me the concern, like initially the way it was worded, I was thinking we had to get rid of Arctic Wolf. And I would not be prepared to do that without testing out other things and especially.
Right, right. Yep, correct. No, you can continue to do just what you're doing now. And in fact, you kind of have to base the bone where we're at with our contracts.
Even with their equipment, we can just basically ignore it. If you test it and you like it, we can use it. If you test it and you don't like it, it can sit there and just take up space and I'm sure that.
Yes, yes, that's exactly right. And I'm, I'm talking a little bit from a disadvantaged position because I don't know specifically if there is any advantage to us having, similar to the Albert sensor. The Albert sensor doesn't do much for us, but at least it's another, another thing that's catching bad stuff. So what's, what's the harm in that? But if we, if I evaluate, which I will do, the Tenable product and the Splunk product, and there's a way to utilize those, maybe to gather additional logging for Arctic Wolf or something along those lines, we'll certainly do that. I don't want to waste an opportunity for another product, but, you know, I also don't want to create a whole lot of additional work in configuring and working through that process, only to have, you know, less stellar results.
Yeah. Well, under, with that explanation and knowledge that we could accept the stuff and not actually use it if we don't like it, I'd be inclined to then just go ahead and opt in because it's not going to hurt us and it doesn't cost us anything additional. And if you work with it, Dawn, and, and say, this, this stuff is terrible, or it's even slightly terrible, but it interferes with what we're trying to do, you know, we can just ignore it then.
Right.
That would be my, that's where I would be going on this.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I think, you know, we have various state-selected systems working, like CYF is a good example or the SURE system. I wouldn't say the state has a.
Good track record.
Good track record, reliable, user-friendly, track record of, of choosing user-friendly products. So it'll be interesting to see how it plays out, but I agree. I mean, I think if there's no cost, it does give us another option to look at and so that it's kind of a why not situation.
Okay. All right.
Yep, that, that's good for me. Yeah, that, that works. Thank you very much.
Do you need a formal motion, Nicole?
Let's go ahead and do that, please.
Okay, I was going to say.
That'll allow us to sign the documents on Monday when, when they're prepared.
All right. All right, is there a motion to take option one provided by the state regarding these cybersecurity products? So moved. And I will second that. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, the motion passes. Thank you very much, Dawn, for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, ladies. Absolutely. Happy Easter.
Thank you. Happy Easter to you, too. We have one more motion. Is there a motion to adjourn? So moved. All right, I'll second that and we are adjourned. And our next meeting will be next Tuesday, April 2nd at 1:00 PM, same place.